Good morning and welcome to the October 25th County Commission Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome. Reminder to silence your cellphones, please, and there's meeting documents next to Commissioner Bender. If you need a listening device, Mr. Wilson will be able to help you. With that, we'll start with routine business. I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero. Item two is to approve the commission meeting minutes from October 18th. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes. Item B is to approve the commission meeting minutes for October 19th.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the October 19th minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion again passes unanimously. Item three is bills to be paid for $637,233.20.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes. There are no reports. Do we have any personnel actions this morning? We have consideration to move, to approve the routine personnel actions. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the routine personnel action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion again unanimously passes. No applications for abatement, no notices or requests, planning and zoning notices. Robert, now is when we go a little slower. Item number nine is petitions for compromise of lien. The first one is DPN O 21379 for $12,922.05.
Commissioners, good morning. Robert Wilson with the Commission Office. Our office has received a petition for a compromise and settlement of this lien, DPN O 21379, in the amount of $12,922.05. And this was provided for public defender, court-appointed attorney, public advocate, and poor relief services between July of 2000 and September 2012. The petitioner is in the process of purchasing a home in the amount of $118,000 and scheduled to close on November 4th. Reported liabilities are $6,300, assets just over $5,000, and he has provided three weeks of earnings statements totaling just over $1,300. His 2015 tax return shows a refund of $786. And he reports an annual income of $27,000. This petitioner is requesting a compromise and release of the lien in full upon payment of $1,000. Want to bring to your attention that this same applicant came to the Commission in 2013 with the same request. And the Commission, on October 1st of 2013, approved a compromise and release of the lien in full upon payment of $1,000. The language that you use, your standard language on approving compromise applications, is that they need to be, they need to be paid in full within a year of that action or that offer is null and void and goes away. We did not receive payment at that time, within that one-year time period, and so the full amount of the lien remained in effect. Again, the applicant has come back. I've spoken with the applicant. He understands the situation and how that action is now done and you are considering a new application even though it is the same request. I believe the applicant is here. He may wish to speak to you. I'm not certain of that. As you know, he can stand up and address you from where he's seated in the audience. And before you may have any questions for him, I would be open for any questions that you have for me.
Does anyone have any questions for Robert to start?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What was the offer that we approved that wasn't fulfilled?
It was a compromise and release in full upon payment of $1,000.
Okay, thanks.
And it was, the amount was the same. There's been no additional lien activity recorded on this lien.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? The applicant does not need to stand or identify themselves. If they would like to just remain seated and add anything to what's already been discussed, they're able to do that without any public notice, so to speak. So if anyone would like to address the Commission on this issue, you're able to do that now.
I would just like to say that the travel is a difficult road in my life and I would ask that, you know, I get a chance to live the American dream at home, my own home.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments or questions?
If I might ask the applicant a question.
Certainly.
You know, we did offer this a couple of years ago or whatever, and we didn't do it. Why is that?
This thing seemed to go through with the house. There was a lot of paperwork issues, so I backed away from it. And at that time, I didn't know that there was a stipulation that I paid this lien in full in one year. I never received a documentation saying that this was a stipulation on this agreement with you guys.
I guess if I may, the other part of it is, in the intervening period, you've not made any small payments even towards getting this taken care of. And, you know, we do tend to feel good about it when people are making an attempt to pay it off. Back in 1998, we did compromise $3,500 of the things. And, you know...
If you don't mind me taking something off this, this did occur. I was accidentally incarcerated. I was incarcerated. The state accidentally let me out of prison. Therefore, I had to ask the towns for public defense because I was incarcerated. I had no job. I had no funds. So I had to ask the state to represent me. And yes, and I'm here to say that part of this is my fault. I'm the one who sacrificed that $1,000. You know, I believe that the state has to, you know, take some responsibility by accidentally letting me out of prison and making me be in this situation as a man.
Did them letting you out accidentally lead to additional charges against you?
No.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
Well, I share the same concern as Jeff. You were aware of the deal and still did not make any payments against it. We've already forgiven $3,500. So the total liens have been over $15,000. Excuse me. But I believe, you know, there should have been some effort there, and I cannot support this. They're all public defender liens or court-appointed, which are even more expensive for us. So I will not be supporting this.
Any other comments, questions?
I guess my only comment is, is I wasn't on the Commission when the last action was taken. And so I'm not sure why there was a decision at that point to allow a payment of only $1,000. In my experience, since I've been on the Commission the last two years, that's significantly less than we typically would compromise a lien for. You know, these aren't our monies. These are taxpayer monies. And we have an obligation to try to keep that money available for the next person who has a hard road and needs some help along the way. There doesn't appear that there's been a lot of effort of good faith on your part to try to show good faith to the taxpayers to repay the amounts that have been provided to you in any way. And so I'm not very supportive of this right now either.
Sir, did you have any comments?
I do. My name's Tom Brandon.
You don't need to identify yourself.
Okay, no problem. Back to you. I've known Jeff for about four years and gotten to know him, you know, over that time period. My father's an attorney in Sioux Falls, and he's been helping Jeff since I met him with a workman's comp issue. He was injured at work, and I know that he's been paying my dad some money. And obviously, I kind of felt like my dad would probably do this pro bono just because he was compassionate to Jeff's situation. And I've, of course, gotten to know him and know that there's a lot of good faith in this gentleman. I've seen, you know, a lot out of him that would give me a personal relationship with him as opposed to, you know, the majority of people that I've worked with and say, I show them houses. I help them buy them, and then that's the conclusion. And, you know, I've gotten to know Jeff a little bit better than that purely on what I believe is good faith. That, you know, he calls. He's had six child. He's called numerous times and wanted to know how she was because she was up at Sanford Hospital. And, you know, again, I agree that there should have been some good faith in the time that's passed from the last agreement until today. But I know that he has absorbed some, you know, some costs in the meantime, trying to get his life back on track from the injury at work and taking a new position, you know, at a job in Brandon which he travels to every day to try to support numerous grandchildren that aren't even his, you know, these involved with the lien that has several kids who all have kids as well. And I think that this is a really stand-up guy that is trying to buy a home, not only to benefit himself but to benefit others, the grandchildren, the girlfriend. And I, you know, I need to throw my mercy on this commission and say, if you'll give a guy a chance, there is one sitting right next to him that's going to do his best to make sure that it doesn't all benefit him but it does benefit others. And, yeah. I showed up here this morning. Didn't have to, but I did so because I have a lot of faith in this gentleman that I'm sitting next to. And I would, you know, be honored to stand next to him and any other than others that he has because I think he's a good guy. Thank you very much. I would hope that you guys would be compassionate and give him an opportunity to help himself and many others. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the Commission? Commissioner Kelly?
I don't think anybody's arguing. Since 2012, it's four years, he hasn't had any difficulty. You know, I don't think we're any inference that he's not a stand-up guy or anything like that. I think the issue is accountability and the issue is what we owe to the taxpayers in many counties. And had there been some attempt to make some payments, I think we would have looked at this a little differently. However, I agree with Commissioner Bender that we should be looking at $5,000 or $6,000 in payment to show good faith in this thing. I realize how hard it is for an ex-con to get jobs and to get out there in society, but sometimes the American dream doesn't work out unless you live the American life.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
While I can share the concerns of my fellow commissioners, I think that potentially something is doable here. And the fact that we didn't fulfill the original offer, so to speak, that can't go without being noticed. But I guess I would float a motion to release the lien upon payment of $2,500.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
Thank you.
Again, as I said, I believe that, you know, this takes into account the fact that the last deal didn't happen and that there's been no favorable sort of actions. But I also think that getting your own home and becoming a taxpayer is a benefit to all of us.
I mean, I think that these are always very difficult. And I'm always amazed, week in and week out, how these are the issues that I personally struggle with the most in trying to balance compassion, as you've mentioned, versus responsibility and accountability. I applaud you for coming today, both of you actually, and I appreciate your comments, Tom. And I know your dad's a great guy and is very compassionate as well. I think that, you know, like I said, I'm not sure why the Commission previously voted to compromise it at $1,000. I think, given the passage of time and the fact that no payments were made, that we can't accept $1,000 this time. But I think I would support a payment of $2,500 in compromise of this matter, provided it's paid promptly and that you go ahead and keep the road that you've been on at least the last few years.
Any other comments? I will make a comment on, as long as everyone's done. Generally, I would agree that we do ask for 50%. And I do remember this conversation from 2013 and how difficult it was. And I do appreciate your dad's support because he gave us more information at that time than I think most of us normally get on these cases. I think if we were willing to compromise for the thousand three years ago, we should be able to do the 2,500 now. This is an unusual case. I don't know that we normally would be able to do this. But I think at this point, to put your life back into whatever is normal for you is a good idea. And frankly, I'm more concerned about those kids and what kind of life that they would have if, in fact, we don't do this. So I would support that. Any other comments? I think we'll need a roll call vote, Olivia.
Lucky Olivia.
Next time, bring more paper.
All right, Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kelly?
No.
Motion passes three to one for a payment of $2,500. Again, we would like to have that done before the House closing on, I think it's the third or something like that, November 4th. If you want to see Mr. Wilson afterwards, or that would be good. Okay. Item number two is, sorry. Item number two is DPN O 47020 for $3,109.25.
Commissioners, the petitioner has submitted a compromise lien application, as Commissioner Bender Benenga indicated, for DPN O 47020 on the amount of $3,109.95. The applicant and his wife are attempting to purchase a home and noted the lien as the title company was completing their review. Home purchase is, closing is scheduled for October 28th later this week, and the purchase price is $129,000. Petitioner was married in November of 1999 and divorced from his first wife in October of 2013. All of the charges incurred were incurred during the time of the marriage. The office has verified that the applicant's ex-wife incurred a number of these expenses at a different address. But again, I would just remind you that these were all incurred during the time that the couple was legally married. The applicant has indicated that he would like to offer a payment of $836.40 for a compromise and release in full. You will note in the briefing memo you received that there was a mention of an overcharge or an error that is noted. And I would, what I would point out to you, that that error was in a spreadsheet that was provided to the applicant. The actual amount that is recorded in our lien documents and what we refer to as the lien summary sheet that you look at, that is a correct amount. So I just would bring that to your attention and anticipated that you might have some questions for me on that. Again, the offer as stated was for $836.40, representing what the couple felt was the public defender charges incurred by the applicant. And that would correspond to 26.9% of the total lien balance. The applicant has presented information indicating a total annual income, $69,000. Assets, a little over $4,000, and liabilities of approximately $1,500. Again, we've provided a full application packet and review packet for you, and I would stand by for any questions. Again, I believe the applicant and his current wife are here in the audience. They may wish to say something. They may not. And would have that opportunity after you have an opportunity to ask me any questions that you may have.
So you want to have any questions for Robert? Commissioner Bar?
Robert, so the things for rent and such are actually for the ex-spouse during the time they were no longer living together. Is that the story? The things for poor relief, rent, et cetera?
There are a number of the charges, yes, that were incurred by the ex-spouse, who at the time the charges were incurred was still the spouse legally married, but yes.
But some were also then for self, so to speak, the party himself?
Yes.
Other questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Robert, if we do approve this, the lien would remain on her. Is that correct?
Well, the request is for a compromise and release in full. If you wanted to word it in some other way, I believe you could. But the request, as it's submitted to our office, is a compromise and release in full upon that payment of $836.40.
Okay. I think it would be important that we maintain the lien on the other party.
Commissioner Bender?
So I'm confused a little bit. You said if we approved a payment of $836.40, but then you said the debt that is actually owed by the petitioner alone is $746.20. Is that correct?
The amount, the $836.40 was the offer that the applicant and his spouse came to the Commission Office with. That was the offer, requesting a compromise and release in full, $836.40.
But that was based on incorrect information?
That is based on a discrepancy on one of the sheets that the printouts that the applicant received from the auditor's office, that one of the specific public defender charges was different than what that one was recorded as. It was recorded as the correct amount in the lien, but on this one printout that they received, it was different.
So assuming the petitioner is offering to pay his public defender's costs, that amount is actually $746.20.
Correct.
So I would make a motion to approve compromise of the lien as to the petitioner only in the amount of $746.20, with the remainder to remain on the ex-spouse.
Is there a second?
I'll second that pending a comment from the petitioner, so to speak.
Good point. Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly?
I'm just wondering about the wording of that. We should remove his name from the lien as opposed to, and I guess you or Sarah can tell me better, what would be the proper? I would like to remove his name from the lien upon payment of the $746.20.
That's probably better wording.
Okay.
And the petitioner may have something to say. I'm sorry, I kind of jumped the gun.
Again, same rules. You don't need to stand up. You don't need to come to the microphone. You don't need to identify yourself, but we would like to hear from you if you wish.
...
Thank you for your comments. Any other questions for either Robert or the petitioner?
Can I do a substitute motion on this with Jean's permission? That we remove the applicant from the lien and upon payment of the $746.20.
Is there a second?
I can second that.
Thank you. Sarah, do you have an opinion on this? Not that we need too legal opinion.
No, I think you're fine if you just remove the applicant from the lien. I think that gets the intent through.
Okay. We have an amended motion, I think, for $746.20. Is that correct? And we have a second on that, so we'll vote on the amendment first. All those in favor of the amended amendment for $746.20 and to remove the applicant from the DPNO, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Now we need to vote on the...
Main motion.
Yep, the main motion, correct?
Substituted it.
You amended it.
Did you amend or, I thought you said substituted.
Oh, I can't hear either. So then we're good.
I think you're fine.
Yep. So we have a motion that's been approved for $746.20, and you can speak to Robert after the meeting. Good luck with your next step in your life. Item C is DPN O 5720 for $20,067.05 and DPN O 58772 for $944.05. and DPNO five-eight-seven-seven-two for nine hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Commissioners, our office also received an application for a compromise and release of DPNO five-seven-two-zero in the amount of twenty thousand sixty-seven dollars and five cents, and DPNO five-eight-seven-seven-two for nine hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. Five-eight-seven-seven-two is solely in the name of the applicant. The other lien, five-seven-two-zero, is in the name of the applicant and her ex-husband and includes charges that were incurred both before and after the couple dur, while the couple was married and after they were divorced. The applicant requests a compromise and a release in full of both liens upon payment of two thousand dollars. The applicant's mother recently passed away, and now she and her five siblings have sold their mother's home. Proceeds of the home are currently held in escrow pending the resolution of this matter. The smaller lien for nine hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents includes human services assistance that was provided on two occasions back in two thousand and six, and the only other activity was a small payment and a collection fee recorded in two thousand and eight. The other lien, DPNO five-seven-two-zero for twenty thousand sixty-seven dollars and five cents, assistance associated with this lien was provided between nineteen eighty-four and October of two thousand and fourteen. It includes public defender, rent, medical, and utility assistance. During the time of the marriage, the couple incurred several very large medical bills. The applicant and her ex-husband were divorced in February of two thousand and five. This lien also includes twelve partial compromise of lien actions because of county policy that provides for a compromise and release of any lien amount over twenty thousand dollars. A total of, total compromise amount of eighty, eight thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-three cents was provided during the time of the lien, and the lien balance at the time of that divorce was twenty thousand dollars. And all additional services that have been provided after the divorce were provided to the, the ex, the ex-husband. The applicant in, excuse me, applicant indicates that she and, and her current husband have, both have health problems and are just getting by financially. She reports that her ex-husband is also on disability and has a very serious illness at this point. The applicant and her husband have assets of just over nine thousand dollars, majority of that being in the, in the form of a vehicle, and liabilities that they list as monthly bills of nine hundred and forty dollars for housing and a bank loan. She's also provided a copy of her, of her two thousand and fifteen tax return with total income of sixty-eight thousand dollars, and they received a small refund of a hundred and eighty-two dollars. Just to, to reflect and, and restate the, the request, the, the request is for a compromise and release in full of both liens upon a payment of two thousand dollars. And we have provided a full application packet for your review prior to today. I would stand by for any questions, and I believe the applicant and, and her husband may also be in the audience if they wish to speak to you.
Okay. So you want to have any questions for Robert?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kelly?
Robert, it, it looks like they racked up about close to thirty thousand dollars in medical bills, is that?
There were some very, there were some very large medical bills.
We didn't separate out, and I am assuming, which I, I hate this thing, but it says, called poor relief, when in fact it might be medical, is that correct? There's twenty-one hundred dollars in, in two thousand and eight.
I'm not sure, Mr. Kelly, that it is medical. I think it is poor relief.
Is that what, okay, because in the past, we've also called medical bills poor relief, and that's where I was con-
These are all separated.
Okay, okay. So there's about twenty-five, twenty-six thousand in medical bills, of which we've already compromised five, yeah, quite a bit. We've compromised a good share of them.
Mr. Chairman?
Other questions?
I'd just point out, along with what Commissioner Kelly said, that, you know, we got bills for about twenty-five thousand dollars from nineteen eighty-eight for medical. That's a large amount of money for today. Twenty-eight years ago, it was perhaps a really large amount of money. I'd just point that out.
Other questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Still one more question, Robert.
Yeah.
These partial compromises, two oh three back, there were several, and they're small, like a hundred and twenty dollars, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Would that be where we, where the hospital didn't charge us, or what, where did they come from?
No, that was per, per county policy, you, where if you have, at that point, any lien over twenty thousand dollars was compromised to twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And so you, there were, that's, that's the reason for a number of those.
And we're now at thirty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Any other questions for Robert? If the applicant is here, we again would be happy to hear from them. Don't have to identify yourself or come to the microphone.
When we first got married, we opened our surgery, that's the first miracle that I did. I was working, I didn't have a job, a job as insurance. So we were just married, had a young child, no way to repay it. And when I went down to get the help, the thing that I had to do, they never, ever explained it to me at that time that we had to repay it. They said, we're helping you out. There was never, we never got a bill, of course we wouldn't. We never got a bill, so we never knew that we had to repay that stolen bill. And we had such a lot of, of legal issues, public defender and stuff like that, after the, and I had rent help because he was in prison, and he tried to support me, and we had to run down to rental assistance and utility assistance.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Gerald.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions for the petitioner or for Robert? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to compromise and lien, and release in full both liens upon payment of two thousand dollars. And after it passes, I would like to, if it passes, I'd like to make a comment.
Certainly. Is there a second?
I will second it for purposes of discussion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Barth?
Well, I, I guess I, I feel that these medical bills from twenty-eight years ago are pretty significant, and it's a pretty heavy burden to try to get out from under. I, I wouldn't like very much to have, have that kind of a bill put on me currently, and I, I support taking care of this and getting a little bit back for the county.
Any other comments?
You know, to be honest with you, I don't know what the right number is here. It appears that the reason this is before us is because there is an estate that needs to be taken care of, and, and so the petitioner has come into some unexpected opportunity for sharing in, in that. And so it's just a question of what is the, you know, what is a right and a fair amount for the county's taxpayers to expect in repayment here? That I agree that the medical bills are, are breathtaking, and it just shows the importance of, of our health insurance system and, and the issues that people face when they, when they don't have any help with a really significant bill like that, and how it can follow them for a number of years. There were a lot of other, there was a lot of other assistance that the county provided other than the medical, which was arguably not related to the medical issues, but related to, you know, public defender costs and rental assistance and things like that. You know, to be honest with you, under the circumstances, I'm not really sure that I have a better number than two thousand dollars, and I think it would be helpful for the county to receive something and to have this taken care of.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would just point out that in settling estates, you know, there's always other costs, you know, for lawyers or, or other bills besides this one, and, you know, the auctioneer has mentioned, it's, it's, it's not like a huge windfall.
No, and I didn't, I didn't mean to suggest that, that's, but just that there is, there is some cash available, a little bit, anyway.
Any other comments from anyone? We have a motion and a second, correct, for compromise of lien for two thousand dollars? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion unanimously passes. If you would see Mr. Wilson or someone in the state's attorney, not state's attorney, in the auditor's office, just sign the documentation and take care of that, that would be great.
Chairman, I guess I'd like to make a comment about the lien process in general.
Please.
You know, as a county, we've extended to our citizens something near forty, forty-nine million dollars worth of assistance. Quite often, people do not remember the fact that when they receive it, that they're told that there will be a bill coming, or that they owe the money to pay us back for legal services, for rent, whatever. And it's, you know, when you're involved in a, in a criminal case and a desperate medical situation, it's easy to get swept away without thinking about that little aspect. And so a lot of times, people don't remember that, you know, they signed a paper that said that they would pay it back, and that frequently comes to us. And we don't, we don't send out bills because we don't have good addresses for people. It would be a waste of, of postage on top of the forty-nine million dollars we're already owed. And finally, I guess I would say that we really do respect people who make small payments on a continuing basis to show their good faith to their fellow citizens for the assistance received. And I, I just, I cannot emphasize enough that, you know, if you've received county assistance, you owe the county. And just because we don't regularly done you doesn't mean that the bill is not there, and I just wanted to point that out to people who are listening and, and maybe are sitting on some of those bills.
Thank you, Jeff. Commissioner Kelly?
I have a comment, too, it's more directed at Robert, but oftentimes on their, when they do their liabilities and, and assets, they, they show the car as an asset, or they may not if it's a leased vehicle, but there's an obligation there, and often we do not have in the liabilities, the, there's one, I can't remember, maybe it was this one that had the monthly payment in their liabilities, but not the balance. In fact, they do owe that money, and, and I'm not sure that they understand completely when they come in, but I think it's up to us to, to say, well, how much do you owe on that car, because you're showing a ten thousand dollar asset up here and a seventy-five hundred dollar liability down here, we don't care about the monthly payment. So I, I would hope that we could show more accuracy in their balance sheets.
Absolutely.
With that, we'll go on to opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make any public comments? If not, we'll go to item number nine, no, ten, at nine a.m., which isn't a problem. We have a public hearing to consider amendments to MC thirty-one dash three dash ten, an ordinance for licensing surface ambulance service in Minnehaha County. Section one dash two, license term, appendix A, geographical areas for county licenses, automatic aid map, automatic aid agreement, and minimum staffing levels and certification. Robert Wilson and Lynn Young.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Robert Wilson with the commission office. As you know, ground ambulance service in rural Minnehaha County is subject to the county's surface ambulance license ordinance, MC thirty-one three ten. The ordinance requires that ambulance services operating in rural parts of the county apply for and receive a new license every two years, and the current licenses expire on January, excuse me, December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. Prior to commission consideration of license applications for the coming two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen period, Metro Communications, the six ambulance services submitting applications, county emergency management, county state's attorney's office, and the commission office request that the commission consider the following ordinance amendments. For clarity and organization, we propose that we go through each of these proposed ordinance amendments individually, and you address them individually as we're, as we're moving down the list. I would just ask if there are any questions or comments before I, before I jump into the, into the individual items.
Go ahead.
Amendment number one is to update appendix A, and this is the primary service ma, area map. The map was requested, the amendment was requested by Metro Dispatch for ease of, ease of dispatch, and the purposes, the changes, the proposed boundary changes have been agreed to by the, the six services applying for the, the coming license period. I will bring this map up in just a second and, and show you specifically what the, the reason for the request is. And the, the request also is to adopt this amendment with an effective date of January first, two thousand and seventeen, to match the new licenses that will be, come effective on January first, assuming all applications that you deal with on your next item are approved. And let me bring up the map to further show this one. So what you're looking at here is the current PSA dispatch map, and one of the, the main items that really was looking to be addressed on this is the, the little carve-outs and, and nooks and crannies around the edge of the city. And, and I know that was, that was problematic for dispatch in, in some ways, and we'd look to get more uniform lines, something that's an easier dispatch, a dispatch map. And the next map I'll bring up is the, the proposal that has been agreed to by, by all services and Metro Communications. So that is, you see, that is the, the updated appendix A with the, the borders and, by, by color coding.
Robert, is the, the purple, it's purple to me at least. Will that be, the, not rural metro, but that, Paramedics Plus, will that be them?
That is the, that is the service that...
Lynn Young, Emergency Management. Commissioner, answer your question. The area on the west side of Sioux Falls and then surrounding, it's kind of a purple checkerboard, if you, so to speak, proposed area six. If approved later on in the next agenda item, would be awarded to Paramedics Plus from the cities, or who currently operates in the city of Sioux Falls. And then other notable changes that you would have, once again, if you remember how we got to this point, is about eighteen, twenty months ago, the current provider in the city of Sioux Falls, Rural Metro, the city of Sioux Falls went through a re-bidding process for their services. As a result of that, at that point, based on the county ambulance ordinance, we had to award the whole area five, which was around the city limits of Sioux Falls, through guidance of the state's attorney's office, to a single provider at that point. MedStar Amulets provided services to the western half of the county. During our discussions with the ambulance services, back in, when we were coming up with this map, they agreed that it would better serve to be, to have someone else out there because of location and, you know, other- there because of location and, you know, other things within their business model. So those changes were made. Once again, ease of dispatch around the city of Sioux Falls and that checkerboarded area, and then Humboldt came to the west of Hartford, or is, in the proposed map, would come to the west of Hartford and then some southwest area. So those are the most significant. There is a little bit of change up on the north half, where Del Rapids, if awarded, would come down in Area 1, and that's basically to get, to cover some, basically to put the, the line in the middle of a section instead of right on the road. There is some difficulty dispatching when it's on a road, because then if you're on the north side of the road, who gets it? If you're on the south side of the road, who gets it? Let's put it down the section line, and that way, we know on some of those highly traveled roads. So that was, those are some of the major significant changes.
Thank you.
Questions for Lynn? Thank you, Lynn.
And if I could just add in, once again, the groups are very good about coming together, adding meeting. We drew, drew up some of the changes, so there shouldn't be any surprises to any of the groups that are out there. And, you know, it was an extremely efficient process that they all brought themselves to the table and made the decision on what's best for the citizens out there.
Do you want to go through all the amendments, or should we act on each one of these individually?
Maybe, maybe for, for ease of organization, I, I had suggested in my memo, go acting on them individually. You certainly don't have to take that suggestion, but that, that was what I had proposed.
Well, because this is a public hearing, are there any comments about Amendment 1? Is there a motion to... Certainly.
Jay Mees, your President, CEO, MedStar Ambulance. The only comment I have is I think that we all came together, and I think it worked well that we come up with this map, and we did that for the betterment of the people, not for any particular service. So I thought that worked well. The only thing I would ask, is I know that this is coming up December 31st, and we talked a little bit about this, is when this is voted on, the sooner that we can make this happen, the better it's going to be. And, and I for one, and I won't speak for my counterparts, but I for one, if we could make this happen today, I'd be ecstatic about it, because I think it's better for everybody. But as soon as you can make this happen, you know, my recommendation is, this map is better than the one we presently have. So that's my recommendation.
Thank you, Jay. Any other comments? I believe the amendment as proposed by staff is to be effective as of January 1st, correct?
That, that is true. And the reason for that is to match up with the new license periods and the, as well as the, the providers that are receiving licenses, presumably receiving licenses and will be operating to, to cover the full, the full areas of the, of the map.
The other thing just to remember, because the maps are being changed, there is some work, and I'm not exactly sure how much that Metro Communications needs to do to their dispatching process.
Do you want to come to the mic, please, and identify yourself?
We'll have Jessica come talk about that, but tomorrow might be a push.
Good morning.
Jessica Mundell with Metro Communications. It would take some time to update the map in the computer, so we could probably do it prior to December 31st, but it wouldn't be something that could be implemented tomorrow.
The, the earliest these could go into effect, because they are ordinance changes, would be November 30th, would be the absolute earliest that they could go into effect.
Okay. Commissioner Bender?
I'm just curious, can I ask you a follow-up? Do you think that you could have your systems in place by November 30th? Do you think that's a reasonable date for you?
I think we would be able to.
Obviously, we're not to the license renewal related issues yet, but we do need to either go through all of these and make a recommendation based on either November 30th, or we wait till January 1st. I don't want to jump ahead to the license agreements until we have this one settled, frankly.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think, you know, barring objection from many of the ambulance services, which virtually all seem to be represented here, I, I think that if, if it's an improvement for public safety, we ought to strongly consider it.
I don't want to violate law and then come back and have to readdress this, obviously. So Jay, if November 30th or December 1st is a reasonable, I know it's not as fast as you might like, but that's as fast as government moves sometimes. If we shot for December 1st, does anybody have a concern about that? Dr. Luther, do you have any concerns?
Jeff Luther, Quality Assurance Director. No, I, I don't, Mr. Chairman. I think we're fine. I think also realizing that, you know, we, we still have the rubber on the road with the sheriff's EMT basics out there, too. So I think this is a good change, and I think that it'll, it'll cohesively impact our ability to respond.
Okay. Thank you.
If you want the November 30th date, then you would just pass, if you're going to pass it, you pass it with no effective date, essentially. That gives the auditor the time to publish for two weeks.
Okay. Now that we have medical and legal, I think we're okay. If we make a motion to pass this amendment without an effective date and then publish?
Yes, that should be, I believe, the way it was calculated, would be November 30th.
Okay. Is there a motion and a second? Motion to approve Amendment 1?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And that motion, just to be clear, will not have an effective date on it?
Correct.
Okay. All those approving Amendment 1 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion unanimously passes. Now we can go to Amendment 2. And Sarah, I'm guessing this is the same issue, correct?
Same issue. If, depending on how you want to do it, you can either put an effective date in, or if you just pass it without the effective date, same thing, November 30th.
Let's do that.
Okay. And Amendment 2 is, is an Appendix B that will also attach to the, to the ordinance. This is, again, it's, it's a map. Boundaries were agreed to by all services and Metro. This is a, essentially a primary mutual aid map that if a service is, is overwhelmed or has a, an issue of responding to a, a call within their territory, this is, breaks down the boundaries of who would get the first mutual aid call to respond to that incident.
Any questions for Robert?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm so happy that the different ambulances could come to agreement on this. And I would point out that some of the mutual aid stuff comes from outside of our county. On the far west, we've got Salem backing us up, and we've got Madison in the northeast, northwest corner, et cetera. Anyway, I, I would move to approve this, this map as well.
Your motion is to approve the map without an effective date, correct?
Sure.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I don't want to go back through this.
Wait a minute. What do we, are we on?
Amendment 2.
Okay, we're still on item 10, then, is that?
Correct.
Okay.
Any public comments? Motion and a second to approve Amendment 2 without an effective date. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Amendment 3.
Amendment 3 is, would be to update Section 1.2, the license term. The length of the term of license currently in the, in the ordinance is two years. There was a, a suggestion of, of moving that to a, a one-year license term. I want to ma- want to be clear that you, this would be, go into effect at, at that November 30th timeframe. So if you would, the, the term of the licenses that you would be approving today would, would be two-year terms. So you can, if you approve this amendment moving forward, license terms would be for one year. But the, again, the terms, the, the licenses that you would be approving with your next item would be, remain for two years.
Commissioner Bender?
Robert, and I just want to reiterate that all the ambulance providers have agreed to the change to one year. Is that correct?
That was, that was part of the, the discussions as well.
Commissioners Lynn Young, again, once again, where the one year came from was some of the discussion from the Commission about hiring and getting professional services to take a look into an ambulance study. And that was the thought, as we understood it from the Commission, was we would hire, or the Commission would hire a ambulance service, or an ambulance study company to come in, and then between now and next budget year, that process would be done. And then, any recommendations, because it was only a one-year term, could be automatically brought in if there was any relicenter issues, any changes in geographic areas, and any of those things could then be implemented into the next ordinance update. So that was brought forth, as we understood it by the Commission, as a result of discussions with the State's Attorney's Office, because we're in the middle of licensees and licensing period and everything, that that probably wasn't feasible to have, that this current one would be for two years, any subsequent ones would be for one year. So we would really be looking at making a change for 24 months from now, for the one year. As a result of, of the discussion with the State's Attorney's Office, you know, it really is up to the Commission, do you want to make a change? My thinking would be is, is if we don't have changes later on in the two-year period as a result of the study, it would just be best to leave it at two years. So, so did they agree to it? I would tell you that it probably wasn't up for much of a discussion with them, because it was a direction from the Commission to bring it to that one year, so that when the study was done, we could implement changes if there was any that were going to be implemented.
Sort of follow-up and just to kind of repeat what I think I heard you say, is that your recommendation is that we not amend it to a one-year period at this time?
Yep.
Because the original purpose for amending it to a one-year period has become moot. Doesn't really...
Exactly. So...
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I just want to make sure now, are we leaving the effective date from the end of the year? It's not starting November 30th or anything, right? I mean, the two-year would be the same as currently, it's just we're changing the map on the earlier part. Or are we changing it so that it goes from December 1st to two years from now, December 1st?
If, if you approve a one-year license period, when you approve a license, it only lasts for one year, meaning January 1st through the next January 1st.
I just want to make sure we're still on January 1st.
Yes.
Lynn, do you have any comments?
No, the only thing, like I said, is, is there was discussion with State's Attorney's Office, and because, you know, as the direction we have now, you'll be discussing the potential for an ambulance study next year, or next meeting. As a result of that, all of that work should be done in July, or before budget season, so to speak. And it was the thought at that point that it could be rolled into the next ordinance changes. It still can be, but then we'll still have another year because of licensure period before it become effective. As a result, it makes probably more sense just to keep the two years that was originally discussed. So...
Well, I'd have to admit that I had some emails about this, because I was confused why we were, why we were doing this. So at this point, I don't really see a point to amending it to one year until some of this all sorts out. So I would not be in favor of making this third amendment here.
Okay. Again, this is public hearing, so if there's any public comment, we'd be happy to hear that.
Hello, Jay Mees, your again, MedStar, President, CEO. I'm not here to pretend to speak for my counterparts here, but we all kind of shook our head no when we heard the one-year thing. The other deal is, is I want you to think about it, because it was brought up, and I wasn't going to talk about it. But you have a lot of smart people in this room, from Dr. Luther all the way down here to Mike, myself, Humboldt. If we're looking at doing some changes in the county and spending 50 grand, or whatever it is, on a Jay Fitch study, it didn't work out so well in Sioux Falls. What I'm saying is, is if we could consider, before you would hire another consulting firm to come in and look at the county, is maybe talk to the providers here and let us get together and tell us what your concerns are and see what we can do for you. I mean, my time isn't 50 grand, and these guys here, I'm sure, aren't going to spend 50 grand of their time to try and fix the problem if you think there is one. So what I would recommend that you do, instead of hiring an out-of-state firm to come back in and tell us how we should or shouldn't run our company, is give, I run a race rescue team, I go all over the country, and every place I go, I'm an expert, until I come back home. And then we're not experts anymore. And so, you know, South Dakota could go out of Minnesota and tell them how to do their business, because we're experts, we go to a different state. But we can't do it in our own city. We can't do it in our own county. And so, my point to, to this board is, if you have questions and concerns, I welcome them. I think we should talk about them and discuss them. But I'm not the leader of anybody here, but what I am going to say is, perhaps if you have those concerns, whether it's financial concern, a response concern, a paramedic versus EMT concern, whatever that concern is, before you go out and hire somebody to come and look at it, give us an opportunity to fix it as a group. We obviously fix the map as a group. And the map, right now, is not best for us, it's not best for them or anybody else in this room. That map is best for what we're all trying to accomplish here. And really, have you ever seen us all come together like this before? I don't think it's ever happened. And we did it. We came together. And we can come together again and fix whatever issues that this county might see, but we talk about taxpayers' dollars, 50 grand. Why don't you take that 50 grand, or whatever it would be, to hire Jay Fitching Company to come in? And then when these people need help in our county, give it to them, just as we did today. You guys have open hearts when it comes to helping people wanting to better their lives and do things for themselves. I think our money can be better spent not hiring out-of-state people to come in here and tell us how to do our business, when we got a whole bunch of people that have been doing it their whole lives right here. And there's not a person in this room that is going to tell you, we want to do the wrong thing for our Commission or for our citizens. We're all here to do the right thing. And give us an opportunity to work together before we start telling people to come in and tell us how we should do our job, and we feel we're doing it pretty good. That's my concern about this, and maybe it wasn't the right format, but it was brought up. So I, I just need to share my concerns with you. And again, I thank you for your time.
Any questions? Thank you for your comments. We'll still continue on with item 3. Anyone else like to make any public comments?
Mr. Chairman, do we need to make a motion then on, on the current?
Well, if there's no other public comments, yeah. Looking for a motion on Amendment Number 3.
Well, I guess I'm a little confused on where these amendments are. Oh, they're way up on top. Oh, all right, all right. Thank you. Looking in the wrong area, that's why. There we go.
Did you find it?
Yep.
Okay, good. Robert, just to be clear, do you want to read Amendment 3, just so we are all on the same page?
Yes, Amendment 3 would have changed the term of the license from two years to one. I, I can bring that up on the actual ordinance.
No, just as long as he can. Everybody's reading the same thing, so when we vote on it, they know what we're voting on.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to leave the term at two years.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to leave Amendment 3 as the length of time for the licenses to be issued at two years. Correct? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Item Number 4, Amendment 4, I'm sorry.
Amendment Number 4 refers to Section 1.6, Paragraph 4, staffing requirements. And this is for all ambulance runs applicable to the ordinance. Every provider will have two EMTs onboard. This is, this has always been the This is, this has always been the case for services that operate in rural Minnehaha County. This, this came up as a, a discussion point among the, the services due to a change in, in state law that allowed for one, one EMT and one driver. It was, again, it was an agreement between all the services in emergency management during those, those discussions, that they wanted to stick with the, the current practice of, of two EMTs for all runs when patients were transported, and that is the, the reflection of this, this amendment number four.
Any questions for Robert? Lynn? Lynn, do you have comments?
Yep. So if you remember, last February, the state of South Dakota, or previous, in the previous year, the state of South Dakota had an EMS task force, EMS study, and they're having difficulties staffing ammunances in rural areas such as Plankington and Miller and Highmore. So out of that study group, what they brought forward as one way to help that would be to reduce the level of staffing in the driver position to a, an EVOC driver with some EMS skills as far as longboarding and CPR and assistance in airway management. And then the second person would have, still have to be an EMT certified person in the back. So our, our ordinance stated that we would follow state staffing levels. When we brought that to the commission, they once again asked us to bring that back to the Rural Ammunization Association. We had that discussion a couple of months ago. Commissioner Barth was there, and at that point, the Rural Ammunis decided that it was still best for Minnehaha County that during the transportation, or during the transport process of the EMS call, that the required staffing would be at least two EMT B-level personnel on board.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
Lynn, what, what does it cost to maintain an EMT certification?
So currently, the more difficult part is getting the certification. Currently, once again, it's about 160 hours of initial training with the price tag of depending on where you go and how it's set up, anywhere from about $650 to $1,000, depending on where you go. One thing that we do help, if you remember, the county does offset 50% of that if that person resides within a rural service, that either fire, rescue, or law enforcement, and we reimburse that. The first percentage is, first 25% is reimbursed after completion of the course, and the second 25% is reimbursed after the first successful year of service to the community. So a long answer, but it's about anywhere from $650 to, to $700 for initial certification, and then initial, or then after that recertification. State requirements require you to get 24 hours of recertification every two years, and that cost is anywhere from 50 to $100 if you go to a 24-hour refresher course. So it's not significant in, the recertification is not significantly, significant, significant financially, because once again, the county also chips in, but it's the time commitment that it takes in this process to serve your community.
And we, we participate in that initial $650 to $750?
Yep, we participate up to 50% in that, and then typically, we'll pay for 100% of their recertification if they continue to be with their service.
Do you know if that comes out of their oper, or if, if they paid out of their operating budget, or does the, the individual have to pay for it themselves?
All, each one of them, you'd have to ask, ask each one of them, which does, how they have those initial agreements with their EMTs, but unfortunately, the cost is significant right up front.
Any other questions for Lynn or Robert? Public input? Is there any other public input? If not, I'd look for a motion on amendment four?
I'd make a motion to approve amendment four to amend the staffing requirements to have a minimum of two emergency medical technicians on board.
Second.
With motion and a second to approve amendment, amendment number four. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Amendment five?
Amendment number five, update section 1.6 geographic boundaries. This adds a reference to a mutual aid agreement requirement that will now be a condition of receiving an ambulance license governed by this ordinance. The Emergency Management Office and State's Attorney's Office have, have drafted this agreement during the discussions amongst the, the ambulance services there. That was a, a discussion and, and an agreement that there should be a, a mutual aid agreement, and, and they've all, there's always been, been operated as mutual, mutual aid and, and coming to the assistance of other services when, when needed. This recognizes it within the, the ordinance itself.
Commissioners, first off, just don't think that this doesn't already happen out there on a daily basis. If there's a need for assistance within the county, the other ammunis certainly provide that. Metro Communications has a protocol to do that, all of those things. Basically, what we're doing here is we're just formalizing it as part of the ordinance, probably something that should have been done several years ago. Once again, all the language has been discussed at the Rural Ammunis Association, and they certainly agree that this is an important part of public safety within the community.
Thank you, Lynn.
I have a question for Lynn, Mr. Chair. So Lynn, does this, does this mean that there is going to be a written agreement between each, each group, or?
Yep, and sorry to cut you off there, Commissioner, but once again, within, and Robert can show you here, the agreements within the ordinance, and then there's a signature sheet also in there. So every time, every two years during the licensing period, they'll have to re-sign before they're actually get their license, so.
Thank you.
And Robert will bring it up here. The, obviously, this being an ordinance, it'll be kept on file within the auditor's office, the county commission office, and then we'll maintain part of that file also.
Thank you, Lynn. Is there any other public comments from anyone? If not, I'd look for a motion on amendment five.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve amendment number five. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you for your patience.
Commissioner, could I just make one comment?
Absolutely.
I, I too want to echo the thanks for the cooperation that the ambulances have shown. I mean, I, I really think that this is a model for how business should happen, and I think it's a great service that you've all done to all the citizens of Minnehaha County, and I just really want to thank you for that effort. Thank you to Lynn for leading that as well.
Item number 11 is to consider the recommendation for renewal slash issuance of surface ambulance licenses in Minnehaha County. Dr. Luther?
Good morning again.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. Once again, we reviewed the ambulance applications for renewal. I sat down with Carol and Robert and Mr. Lind Young, and we reviewed the applications that were submitted in their entirety, one for each primary service area. The change that we've had last year obviously has now been approved, and that is on these boundaries, which I think is a, is a, a great change. I also commend the, the ambulance services for sticking with the two EMT basics in their vehicles. I think that's an, an uptick for quality demonstrated within our county. Upon review of the applications, I think I submitted a template that's headed, and that shows some of the indicators that we looked at for the, or the application process, and basically did primary verification, including their medical directors, the response times and level of service that they provide, as well as their insurance. The other things that I looked at was to be certain that they've got sanitation policies put into place, that their rigs are, are updated, and at the basic level, in order for them to receive a license from the state, that vehicle will need to be inspected. Lind Young graciously volunteered to go out and review each one of these ambulance rigs for the basic life support equipment level. That has been an issue somewhat for me through the years, because the equipment in these ambulance now is at the ALS level, meaning there's medications involved and other equipment that needs to be inspected, and I think maintained by their, and signed off by their medical director, again, because someone needs to look at medications, and if they're outdated, also make sure that there's lock boxes and methods to handle narcotics, those sorts of things. But having said all of that, based on what we've looked at or what I've considered, I think that the services all have qualified with respect to renewal of their approving their license for each of the respective primary service areas. With that, I'll open it up. Any questions that you might have particularly?
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Luther?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I, I think that, I really appreciate your work on this, Dr. Luther, and I think as a whole, we're making some good progress today on, on the whole ambulance system in our county, and this is good news for all of us.
Just a quick question. Humboldt doesn't have a direct medical control box completed? You have comments about that?
I brought that, I, I talked with Dr. Travniczek, their medical director. I think they do, after talking with him, they certainly are able to call directly to the VERA system. I think going forward to that direct medical control whole issue should be looked at, which means if, typically, why we have online medical control, if a paramedic falls outside their guidelines and they need to consider another pathway for treatment in pre-hospital care provision, this allows them to call directly by the radio and talk with the pit boss or an emergency room physician and say, is okay if I administer this medication? Or can I double this medication or repeat this medication if it falls outside that? We're getting better and better with allowing more and more discretion in the paramedics. Their training level now are, is becoming more sophisticated, and they are able, through training, advance their skills to the point where we should give them more discretion so that they don't have to do online medical control. This is only just a, a comment, that doesn't mean that we have to change it. I still think that if they get into trouble, that they can call on the radio and talk with a physician. And I think we'll change that with electronic care and monitoring and, and basically FaceTime, if you will, with an emergency room physician, as we get more and more sophisticated with our technology.
Thanks for your comment.
Dr. Luther, just to follow up on that comment, the other box that's empty on this chart is the response and level of service for Paramedics Plus. I was just curious why that was not completed.
They will more than adequately suffice that. They, we, we don't have any history with them for them to, this, this information come from the application. Forthcoming will be the last quarter quality assurance report that I'll go over with you in detail. But since I really have no history with Paramedics Plus yet in the county, that'll be forthcoming. The ordinance states that they have 60 seconds to respond, or to acknowledge, rather, and then 10 minutes to be en route to the call. And that's something that's in that quality assurance report that's forthcoming. But I have no issue with that, and it may have been an oversight on their, their application, but they will easily be able to acknowledge in 60 seconds and be en route within 10 minutes, as per the county ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Luther. With that, does anyone have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I would make a motion to renew the licenses for surface ambulance as proposed in our county.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions, comments?
Just wanted to be clear that it would not be a renewal, because you have Paramedics Plus as applied point. Except the, the applications that have been submitted for 17 and 18.
Since there's so much competition for this work, yeah.
So I guess my, my motion is to accept the proposed renewal and issuance of surface ambulances licenses in our county, and it is Minnehaha County, in case anyone wants to know.
Do we have a, do we have a second? Or are we waiting for a second opinion?
This is a medical kind of thing. We wait for second opinions, right? How about a second? Come on.
We're having a discussion back there that evidently has some ramifications about the motion. So...
I second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barth's motion.
Wow.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ambulance licenses?
What day do we vote?
Yeah. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you for your patience. Authorized, or item 12, authorize the chairperson to sign a Minnehaha County jail per diem contracts with the counties of Aurora, Brookings, Duel, Gregory, Hudson, Hutchinson, Hyde, Kingsbury Lake, Lincoln, McCook, Moody, Sanborn, Turner, and Barth.
14 of them.
Barth County. Does anybody have any comments? Jeff, would you have anything you'd like to add to it?
No, Jeff Gromer, the warden at the jail. This is just the yearly renewal of the contracts. The current contracts expire at the end of this month, so I'm a little close to the end, but the current rate's 9227, the new proposed rate's 9343. No change in the work release or electronic monitoring fees, so pretty consistent yearly deal.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any other comments? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 13 is any county commission liaison reports?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Couple of them here. We did have a planning and zoning meeting last night, and there was a request to extend permission for a gravel pit operation, and it was denied. I expect it to be appealed, which will come to our November 22nd meeting. Additionally, if I might, I've been on the board of directors for the museum for a number of years, and last Friday, I went on a museum lantern-led tour of a cemetery in Sioux Falls here, and it was really great, and I think, even though I've been on the, the board for the museum for a number of years, I am constantly surprised at all the different items that they actually do in our community.
Thank you. Any others? Mr. Kelly?
The library director search. We met yesterday all day and did Skype interviews with the seven, six or seven, I can't remember, different individuals. We, the next move will be now to bring in the final, the, what we decide will be the two or three finalists for face-to-face interviews, and I'm guessing we should be by, by the end of November, probably, November, yeah, by the end of November, time's flying by. Should have somebody selected, and everything seemed to go right now with the interim. I don't know if we have a director, or if just kind of it's functioning, but it's doing well, and we'll get that position filled. We did have initially 26 applications, so we, we had a pretty good response, we felt, to that job.
Any others? I will just briefly suggest, last week, I was able to attend a meeting with some other individuals in reference to an upcoming legislative proposal by the governor and the Department of Health, and it's being critiqued and reviewed and all those good things at this point for another proposal for Medicaid support. And I'm excited that he's taking that proactive approach and going to support something like a Medicare expansion. And frankly, as we were listening today to this, all the DPN... And frankly, as we were listening today to this, all the DPNs that we have as a county, I would feature to guess, without giving a number, well over three-fourths of those expenses that we saw today that we frankly revoked, if you will, would have been paid for by Medicaid way back when. And I think it's high time that we consider moving this forward, and I look forward to some finalizations of those opportunities in the next legislator, legislative session. Any other liaison reports?
Commissioner Bennigai, just would point out that I did meet with Southeastern Behavioral Health this week. Their executive director will be coming to one of our upcoming meetings to give us an update of the work that they do in the mental health field for the county, and some, a little bit tweaks on their contract with us that are, they've been affected by the changes in the wage and hour laws and some other issues, but that still will bring their contract in within what our budget amounts are, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I guess Commissioner Bender's comment reminded me of a meeting I was at with legislators, legislators, educators, and they talked about issues with our students where the process for keeping kids in school is still not working as hoped for, but it's only been a few months since we passed that Senate Bill 73, and so at the same time, the first step or so is operating, but the second and third aren't going, and, you know, there's a fear that those things won't get going. And as I mentioned during that meeting, it's sort of like playing baseball without second and third base. You know, how do you hit a home run? And if the whole process isn't ready to go as you step up to the plate, and our educators right now are faced with kids who need help to get through things, and we need to do better.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there any new business? Any old business? I would look for a motion to go into executive session for potential litigation personnel and contract negotiation.
My motion, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Looks like we need about five minutes to sign documentation or more.